And welcome. Our meeting will now come to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the liberty and justice of all. And now, for a moment of silence. For remaining women in the military at home and abroad, for our police and firefighters who protect our safety here in our community, for the first responders who have been working for over a year so far, and for those who have been affected severely by the pandemic. Please be seated. Well, this evening is my last board meeting. And being the second woman to serve as mayor in 100 years in our incorporated village of Garden City was my greatest honor. I want to thank all of you for the support and for the kindness that I felt come through from you in all of our interactions. You will always be in my thoughts and in my prayers. When decisions were challenging, I tried to stay faithful to what I felt my residents wanted. It has been a wonderful period of my life, and I am happy that I found the courage to say yes. I spent 12 years of my life serving our village, about five years as a member of the Central and East POAs, and seven years on the Board of Trustees, five as trustee, two as mayor. I consider it one of the most golden periods of my life. So yes, I want to thank our entire community, our trustees, our executive staff, and all the devoted people we work with every day. Okay. And now, we are going to move along on our agenda, and we will go to comments by department heads. And we can begin with Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say congratulations. Thank you for all your assistance throughout the years, especially with Police Reform. I appreciate all that. I also want to thank and congratulate all the outgoing trustees. Thank you for your help over the years. And trustee Hyer for being a liaison to Police Department the last couple of years for all the help he has provided us. Number eight, I have the conference attendance for the annual truck scale calibration. We have to do that twice a year. If we don't calibrate the scales, we cannot testify in court. Syracuse is back doing the scales certifications. We want to send a second officer with him, but with COVID, we're going to probably wait until the next spring event because of this. So, or September if we can. So that's all I have at this point in time. I'd just like to bring one other item up. We have a trend of catalytic converter effects all around us. In the county, there's 35 cases and over 100 catalytic converters stolen. This one, if you have an older 2,000 van, either a Ford, a Zuzo, or a Honda, apparently the catalytic converter is of value with the minerals inside. If you have one in your driveway, make sure your lights are on. If you hear any noise, please let us know. If a commercial owner, Commercial Avenue and Park River Avenue, there are also vans there. And we do have people who park vans in the business areas on Franklin and Seventh Street. We do have quite a few. We did a survey around, and we try to speak to people as we see them. And if we know who they are, owner, we call them. Just be wary of that. It's countywide, but really many old Garden City Park, East Garden City, and Elmont particularly hit hard. So I just want people to be aware of that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Jehan Yelo?
Yes, I, good evening, Mayor. I also want to say congratulations. It's been a pleasure serving with you. Thank you for the support. Trustees, thank you as well for the support and kindness. I don't have anything on the agenda this evening, but I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on the past fiscal year as far as the applications that we've had processed in the building department. To date, we received this year 1,400 applications and processed them. With that being said, they equal to about $4.1 million in the building department this year. So we've had a substantial good year, and we look to have more to come.
That's excellent.
Thank you.
Very fine. And thank you for your congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's see, move on to Mr. Moody.
Good evening, Mayor. Good time now. Hello. Good evening, Mayor. Unfortunately, Chief Dressfield couldn't make it tonight. On behalf of him and the chief's office, we just want to congratulate you and the rest of the trustees, for all your service to the village and the assistance for the volunteer fire department as well. Tonight, we have nothing on the agenda. If anyone has any questions, feel free to ask their owner.
Okay, I think so, but thank you for your congratulations. I appreciate them. All right, hello, let's see. Mrs. Wu?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. First, I also would like to thank you and all the outgoing trustees for all your service, all the years of service to the village. On the agenda tonight, I have item number one, the approval to appropriate funding from the termination reserves. At last night's budget meeting, we discussed how the village has a reserve for these termination payouts. We currently have two employees who left village service from the Public Works and Recreation and Parks Department, and therefore, we're requesting approval to transfer the funding to pay out those termination accrual time. Item number two are transfers that were requested by Mr. Swazi, so he will speak of those items tonight.
And that's it? Mrs. Wu, is that it?
Yes, that is it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you for the comments. Let's see, next we go to Mrs. Rosenblatt. Do you have anything for us this evening?
Other than my sincere thank yous and gratitude for yourself as well as the outgoing trustees for all of your village service over the years, not just on the board, but everything else you've all done. And it's been my honor to serve with you all. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Do we have? Oh, Louis Minigill?
No. Paul. Paul.
Oh, Paul. Very nice.
Thank you, Mayor. And to echo my fellow department heads, thanks to all the trustees for their service to the village, for their thoughtfulness, their suggestions, and particularly over the last six months, their good thoughts, prayers, and support from me. I appreciate it very much. Recreation has two items on the agenda today. Item number 15, engagement of professional services. We'd like to bring harder services in for an additional four days to complete the stump removal from Tropical Storm ICHs. As of Monday, we have 26 stumps left, and harder resurfaces. They can clear them out in the four days we're requesting. You might remember, we did engage them for nine days, which they estimated would be enough to remove all the stumps, but they came across a lot of extremely large stumps, which took a lot longer than they thought. So these four days should finish up all the stumps from that storm. Second item is number 16, award bid. Our grounds maintenance contract is up. We have gone out to bid. We received five bids. They ranged from a low of $250,372 for Conkel up to over $400,000, and we have five bidders. We are recommending the award to Maker Conkel. We have gone over the contract with Conkel, specifically their duties and responsibilities, and we've reviewed that all with John Tower and with his foreman. And we have a person from the Parks Department that tracks their work and follows up with them. They improved their performance over the last two years, and we suspect that they will be doing even better this coming year. So we do recommend award of bid Conkel. And that's all that we have this evening.
Thank you for your comments.
People, I have a quick question. Sure. Have we started looking at the sprinkler systems for the springs?
Yes, we have. Maintenance Department has gone out and is starting this week on the sprinkler systems in the outside parks. And we have our contractor, Burn and Sons Associates, scheduled to come in and start up St. Paul's system. And that will probably happen in the next week to 10 days. I haven't been able to get an exact date from them, but they are onboard, and they will be coming in.
Thank you. Mayor, I note the presence of Mr. Levin on the call, and I believe he was going to address item?
Mayor, I note the presence of Mr. Levin on the Zoom call, and I understand he was going to address item four on the agenda.
Fine. Mr. Levin?
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm Roy. This item is following up on the previous approvals that have been given for the project of 555 Stewart Avenue. Anyone who may remember back to the time this originally was done comes back several years ago, back to 2018 and on since then. There were several conditions that were imposed by the village as part of the approval of this project to which the developer had to agree and execute various documents. Two of those are before the board at this time were asking for authorization for the mayor to execute those documents. The first document memorializes the various conditions to require affordable housing to be provided at the property in accordance with the village code amendments that were previously adopted and in accordance with the approvals given this project to comply with the federal court judgment. The document is very simple, actually. It just reiterates all the conditions that the board imposed at the time. It'll be recorded against the property, so it is an obligation of the current and all future owners for a period of at least 50 years. It spells out various steps that the developer asked to follow to make properties available after they've done and do a lottery-type system rewarding units to people who are eligible and to keep it in effect for 50 years. So if people move out and are replaced by tenants who come in later on, the new tenants will also have the benefit of the affordable housing requirements. So basically, that agreement memorializes all of those conditions and puts them into the changed title of the property. The other agreement was motivated by the financing alternative that the developer sought years ago with the IBA. They received IBA financing approval, which gave them various tax benefits, exemptions from sales tax, exemptions from mortgage tax, included in which is some exemptions from village private taxes, so that they would pay during the period of the IBA financing, they would be making pilot payments to all the local governments, the tax, the village, the town, the county, in amounts less than that which would ordinarily be applied if the taxes were not, if they did not get any benefits from the IBA. This agreement, however, is a separate agreement that holds the village harmless, makes the village whole, so that regardless of the IBA exemption, the village will receive its full share of the property taxes for the duration of the IBA exemption. And should there be another IBA exemption down the road, which is sometimes possible, it would continue on into that exemption as well. So those are the two agreements that were, they've been signed by the developer. I've gone through the form and approved it. Peter B.'s office has gone through it and approved it. And the conditions of the board's approval of this project included that these agreements be signed by the developer and the village, subject to the approval of me as special counsel and the village attorney as to the form of the document. So we're asking for a resolution, which I prepared and I think is the 20, to authorize the mayor to sign these agreements.
All right, so do I?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Tom. That item is on the consent calendar. Unless a trustee is anticipating removing it from the agenda, I believe it will go as part of the consent calendar. Mayor, I have another item, item five, on the agenda. You may recall that in the course of the third track project, the Long Island Railroad acquired three small vacant parcels of land from the village. One of those parcels was valued at $610,000 and was the subject of a prior resolution of this board authorizing you to accept that sum from the state. However, the parcel involved, the subject of this agenda item, originally had a concrete pad and fence on the premises, but the village removed those items prior to the state's assessment of value. Once the state became aware that the village had incurred the loss of those items as well, and after the paperwork was submitted for the $610,000, the state increased its offer by an additional $3,275. So tonight's resolution authorizes you to re-execute essentially the same agreement, but to accept the higher amount of $613,275. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Think Mr. Swazi is next?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm audio with you.
Last one. Okay.
So Mayor, first of all, I'd like to join my colleagues in congratulating you for your successful completion of your two-year term. It's been a busy time. And I also want to thank you for your support and also for the outgoing trustees that thank you for your support and service as well. Item number two A on the agenda that Mrs. Wu referenced. We had a snowstorm last month, and it incurred funding beyond what was in the budget, allocated budget. So we're asking for a transfer from these various accounts for a portion of it. And item B, 2B, is the remainder of it to fulfill the payment for the open farm for snow. Item number C is a transfer from to D and F Administration from Recreation LED Lighting to fund the migration of the Keystone Services to a hosted environment in the cloud. Item number six on the agenda is a memorandum of understanding with Nassau Grid regarding use of Kellum Place and Kellum Lane as the path for the gas main from 11th Street to Stewart Avenue. Item number seven on the agenda is on the agenda has seven, it has two bullets, but the first bullet is covered under 2B, so it's not needed here. But the second bullet is, and that is to for the virtual web server Keystone Information Systems, is the actual engagement of Keystone Information Services to migrate our Keystone Services to the cloud. Item number nine, AOP well treatment. This is a change order to a previously approved resolution. However, shipping charges were not included in the original request, so this change order is for the addition of freight charges, not to exceed $1,500. Item number 10, engineering services, open to go tank replacement. As the board has been notified in past meetings, there was a welding issue with the interior wells, the exterior wells of the water tank, which required additional legal work and also required additional engineering work for oversight and meetings and bringing in subject matter experts. So this is to, this is for the additional time that H2N put on the project. Number 11 is the DPWR fire alarm system. The fire alarm system at the DPWR is old and obsolete and was targeted to be replaced as part of the 2019-20 capital budget. However, the original funding of $70,000 was less than a third of the true cost of the new system. Currently, Inteltech, a vendor on the New York State contract that we've been using throughout the village for our security and armor upgrades, is currently maintaining existing fire alarm system as service no longer provided by the legacy vendor due to the aids of the system and the availability of parts. Inteltech decides of the new system with an anticipated cost of $200,000, give or take. These transfers are to fully fund this capital project with funds from the workforce planning and LED fieldlight capital projects, which no longer need these funds. Item number 12, engagement of professional services, Sid Page and Reese L. P. C. So A and B are related to legal work that was anticipated. The A1 is for the legal work associated with the well issue I just mentioned in regards to H2N. Mr. Dave Ullson gave me an estimate of up to $50,000 to complete that work. Item B is for the air treatment process, specifically for wells 12 and 8 that are on the Garden City Golf Club property. Actually, it's on our property, surrounded by the Garden City Golf Club property. Mr. Ullson of Sid Page have been working with the attorney representatives of the golf club extensively, also with our H2N engineers, myself, and the construction contractor to facilitate the agreement that the board ratified on the previous P O of the agenda, including SECR and the State Historic Preservation Offices, also known as SHPO, the both are SECR and SHPO. This request, therefore, is for the board to ratify and recognize this additional legal expense at a proximity cost of $1,75,000. Please note that the agenda says 150. It needs to be corrected. Originally, it was bifurcated into $2 rounds, and when we decided to make it one amount, the only first amount, the original amount, made it onto the agenda. So I apologize for that error, but I corrected it tonight by voiceover. Number 13, St. Paul's stabilization work. Last agenda, the board approved the $15,000 expense for the Palmer Setti to go up on top of the roof and assess additional work that needs to be done. They're coming back to us now with a smaller, instead of $15,000, they reassessed it at $10,400, and the remaining $400, $600 will be for item B, which is to have West Dor construction group providing the capital lift to assist for Palmer Setti with the work. Number 14, stormwater management program services and MS4 permit compliance activities. Item A is no longer needed. We did an administrative transfer this afternoon. We found funding. But item B is still requiring to engage DMV engineers and architects for services to prepare the 2021 stormwater management program and a report also referred to as SWMP for submission to the New York State DEC. The report is due in June of this year. That's my update.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not sure who is addressing the chamber requests, if anyone, but before we get to that last item, may I join with the other people who have expressed to you and the outgoing trustees their appreciation for the hard work that you have done? I think I more than most know the commitment of time and effort which your positions have taken, and I want to thank you all for your service.
Ralph, a question on the water tower? Yes. As part of discussions with the contractor, have we spoken about extending the service contract over warranty under, given that the extra un-welded?
The, the, I'll just say, to my knowledge, I can't go beyond what I'm going to say, but I can seek counsel and vice versa. My understanding is that the welding issue, had it not come up, the warranty that's in place will still be in place. What we do is we, when the H2 consultants saw the inferior wells, it wasn't 100%. It was spotty. And it's really not a structural or strength issue. It was a, when they painted, it was adherence of the coating. So I'll be clear, it wasn't a structural strength issue. So now it's being corrected. I believe that, even though it's late, that the same warranty will exist that existed before. There should be no change, but I'll double check that. I believe that would be the case.
Mr. Swazi, is anyone addressing the chamber items? I'm assuming that they will be part of the consent calendar?
I want to. This is Dan Stanley. I don't want to.
Please.
Basically, there are four items. The first item is starting in street dining, as we did last year, where restaurants could put tables in the middle of the street, which start on the Thursday of Memorial Day weekend, May 27. And run through the second week of September, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. No Sunday nights this year. Secondly, setting the date for the Belmont Festival for June 4th with the rain date of June 11th. Third, starting June 11th, on Friday evenings, the promenades would take place, starting June 11th through the second week of September. And the last item is the, what used to be the Easter Antique Coff Great. We couldn't really run it Easter this year due to the proximity to Easter being so early. So we were planning on running it on the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, May 30th, starting at 1:00 on the normal.
Did anyone want to speak to this issue?
Mayor, there is one last. Mayor, if I might?
Yep.
Item 17 on the agenda, the St. Paul's School stained glass window removal is being awarded this evening as well to take down the stained glass windows and create them, protect them for storage until a future use is determined.
Good. Okay. So I think that I've spoken with everyone who has something to read or explain about the agendas, so I am going to move on unless someone has a question.
Mayor, I just wanted to add my congratulations to the trustees completing their terms. And it was my honor and privilege to serve with you all, and I wish you well in your next election.
Mayor, before we move on, I want to thank you for serving as mayor and for your time as trustee, as well as Deputy Mayor and Trustee Bolbrook, who's not with us tonight, and trustee former mayor, Mr. Dorney, as well as trustee Pacrinos and trustee Hyer. I thank them all for their service over the years. And now your spouses can get your time back. And I'm sure you guys and gals will be pretty busy over the next couple of weeks. I'm sure your spouses have something planned for you on these Thursday nights. Again, thank you for your service, for all of you.
Mayor, can I make a statement?
Yes.
Given this is going to be my last meeting as a trustee, I wanted to take a few moments to thank a couple of people. I'd first like to thank the WPOA and the residents that had their trust in me over the past six years. I'd like to thank all the POAs in general for all their hard work and the many hours they give every year volunteering for our great village. To Yvonne and Rich, it was great getting to know you during our campaign. Please continue to look for opportunities to volunteer in the village. We're lucky to have residents like you willing to roll up their sleeves and volunteer. To the department heads and village staff, Ralph, Commissioner, Chiefs, Courtney Irene, Paul Giuseppe, Garcia, Peter, Carissa, Dominic, Maria, Mark, thank you all for your work behind the scenes in keeping the village running. And special thanks to Karen for being the glue to keep the village together. To the members of EAB, thanks for bringing environmental issues to the forefront. It's been a great two years working with you, and I am an available resource and an ally. To the mayor and my fellow trustees, while we did a contralot in six years, together with management, we got the senior center, ambulance service, improvements to the pool, community park, and all the parks within our village, 555 Stewart, and now the work that's planned with the library, not to mention all the infrastructure work, much of which is not obvious to our residents. We did this while keeping our AAA rating and running our budget below the cap for many, many years. To the incoming trustees, congratulations on your upcoming terms. You've made a lot of promises to get to where you are. Now you've got the wind in your back. But all you have to do is look at Albany to see how quickly the winds can change. But as a resident and trustee, I wish you the best of luck. And lastly, to my family, my beautiful wife and kids. Don't let me take this journey over the past six years. Hopefully, you can get used to having me at home and not running to meetings. My promises start working, and I'm going to do this soon.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to also say it's been an honor and a privilege being a trustee in this village for the last four years. I want to thank the Eastern Property Owners Association and village staff. They are truly some of the finest, hardworking people I know. Our village is lucky to have such dedicated employees. I'd also like to wish the incoming trustees and mayor good luck and congratulations. Wish nothing but the best for this village, and it is the greatest place to live and work, and I'm glad to be here. So thank you for the honor of serving.
Very nicely put, all of you.
Hey, I'm Roy, guys. Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you to you and to all of my colleagues tonight whose terms are coming to an end. It was really great, not only just working alongside you guys, but really becoming friends, and I really value that. I'm sure, you know, there'll be plenty of time for us to catch up in the future, but it's a goodbye for now. But thank you so much for everything you taught me these past years, and good luck to everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on. I think we've already probably handled a bit. Do all there any questions or comments from the trustees? Or have we taken care of that? So then we will move on then to citizens' comments on agenda items only. Please stand and give us your name and address.
Hello, Mayor, can you hear me? Bob Wroos.
Yes.
Hello.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm actually curious about the, on the agenda item on the, on the public works, the 10, the number 10 and number 12 A. I mean, is this something that came out at like 11th hour that all of a sudden we need all this additional work on the, on the water tower? It's almost $213,000. Oversight for somebody and all of a sudden they discovered it?
I'll take that, Mayor. Mr. Wroos, the.
Apparently, on their 12 A, apparently, somebody could do it. Could, could the contractor stupid guy in the new water tower? He's willing to pay the legal firm approximately $50,000 to challenge Caldwell well tanks. I mean, what's going on?
So as I explained earlier, maybe I didn't give enough detail. The water tower is a multi-year project, and what numerous relates the beginning. But as it got toward the welding phase, we, the H and M consultants had inspectors on the ground, in the tank, with the welders. They continually pointed out inferior welding conditions that were not given proper attention. They were repeatedly told it's fine or we'll take care of it. Nonetheless, H and M, prior to the start of painting, which would have been a disaster because the welding that would take place after painting would damage the paint, required to be resurfacing. And so we put a stop work order on based on the voices from our H and M consulting team, brought it to the board's attention. We got legal involved, both Mr. B's office and with Dave Udelson, our environmental attorney. And we turned it around after a specific amount of time of talking, and required an extra two months of welding, oversight, subject matter experts, and legal documents between the tank contractor and their legal team and our lawyers. So this money was not anticipated as such, but it was absolutely necessary to get the job done the right way for this village. It's a very visible and expensive investment, and it needs to be done right. There's no other option. And I pushed for this, the board listened, and we assigned the right resources to it. That's the, that's the legal side. On the H and M side, the schedule as contemplated during the award of the contract went, was derailed by these, not the identification of the wells, but the resistance to properly address them. As such, many more hours, many more photographs, many more inspections had to occur, which significantly raised their time. They have to pay for their time. So this resolution is a acknowledgement and verification by the board that this work will be paid for, and deservedly so.
Mayor, I'd like to point out, this is Delaney, I'd like to point out, so that the record is clear, that this issue was discussed at some length, in my recollection, in maybe two months ago, where it was discovered that there was a problem with the wells, not structural, but so that they couldn't be painted over. So this is not something new. We are now paying for what this board authorized two months ago to get this straightened out so that the water tank can continue and that it would be in proper repair.
And if I might, and for everybody, it's essentially for, it's for, you know, quality insurance or quality check on all the wells. And they're, you know, considering that a water tank, how long did the last water tank last, Ralph? Was it 90-plus years?
It was, I believe it was 83 years with a good coat of paint and some sandblasting. Could have gone to level 20 maybe, but it would have been replaced at that point. This new tank, this new tank should go all over 100 years.
In other words, with the, you know, the miles of wells that are on the new tank, you want someone to be doing some Q C on it and making sure that what the wells that were spent, that every single well is up to spec. And we did talk about this and authorize for this service for them to go through and make sure that they analyze each and every one of them. And when they did that, lo and behold, there were a significant number of wells that they felt should be improved. Again, not a structural thing, but it's more about the painting and the coating. But this really assures that we don't even get what we paid for. I believe the resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, Ralph, was even considered slightly better than what we had started with. So this is absolutely something, when we do something of this magnitude, to have this sort of oversight is really, really a necessary thing.
Yes, trustee Menon, you're correct. Not only are they fixing the wells and painting them as according to the spec, but in addition, they're painting the wells an extra coat or two to give it even higher level protection than was originally originally part of the bid span.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we're actually using the higher epoxy to, higher quality epoxy?
The paint, yes, we're using a very high quality paint which will, should last about 20 years versus a more standard brand which should go maybe 10 years. So we've put a lot of thought and design into, well, the engineers did, into this tank. And we want the product we awarded, and we will get the product we awarded.
Question. Question I have is who was responsible for the wells to begin with? Was this Caldwell organization? Were they willing to just let it go through and paint over their mistakes?
So the welding is probably the work of, I'm not sure if the welders were directly working for the tank builder Caldwell or if they were subcontracted, but either way Caldwell has the awarded contractors responsible, and that is the party that the lawyers were dealing with. So the welding is a skilled work. It doesn't matter which employee does it as long as the specification is met, and the specification was detailed. For the interior welding was a higher level spec where the water touches it than the exterior. But they were both very high up in the, you know, the very good quality wells. So they're responsible for it, and we made them understand they're responsible for it, and they are responsible for it. They did the right thing in the end. And these costs are reflective of the additional work burdened by our consultants. This is authorized, recognized, the work and the payment. How it works out at the end is a legal matter that we discussed outside of this room.
Okay, another question is what do you, what do you hope to gain by having these attorneys go after Caldwell? You're looking for financial paybacks or what are you looking for?
We're not looking for anything but more, well, we put out in our bid span and paid for. The job, the wells specifically, the overall job, the entire job is going very well. But the welding issue is something that was a specification to a certain level to ensure adherence of the paint to the interior and to the exterior of the well, of the tank. That specification could not be made with the quality of the wells that were observed by our consultants. Our consultants spent many months trying to correct it. And they, they had meetings, they had weekly meetings, they talked about it. They documented, they took photographs. It was not being addressed professionally. So when it was brought to my attention in November, I brought it to the board's attention, and we had the lawyers involved, and we directed properly to do what we had to do to correct it. That took a little bit of gaminship on part of the lawyers and disdocumentation inspections, and a third-party expert unaffiliated with both the tank builder so that it would not be someone that benefits from work with the tank builder and someone not affiliated with us. It's just a total third-party person. And they agreed, and so the work was included. It ended up being a two or three month delay. It's costing a little more money, but we are back where we're supposed to be. The tank should be online sometime in the early to mid fall.
Thank you, Mr. Wroos.
So the lawyers are on twisters. In other words, it's giving a legal force behind the, what the village wants?
They just made sure the contract was adhered to, so that's good. We paid them for it.
Thank you, Mr. Wroos.
Question I have.
Next speaker, please.
Yeah, Bruce Torino. The question I have is whether the incurred cost for this budget item needed to be paid because of the non-compliance with the tank building company. To phrase it differently, is this cost a what-for? Meaning, had they done the job and the wells correctly the first time, would the cost have needed to have been incurred by the village?
No, these costs are additional costs brought about by the circumstances of the inferior welding. So, I'm sorry, Mr. B, you want to test this?
And the recovery of those costs is being investigated.
They get it charged back under the contract.
I'm sorry, Mr. Torino, I couldn't hear that. Could you repeat it?
If the wells were inferior, theoretically, you should have been able to charge back to the contractor for the cost of remediation.
Yes, and that very point is being pursued by Mr. Udelson in conjunction with our office.
So also, to be clear also, the resolutions tonight do not necessarily mean that additional costs being incurred by the village. It just reflects the board's understanding that these costs occurred and they need to be paid to our vendors. Where the money comes from is something Mr. B's office is working on.
Meaning that we're going to pay it out first and hopefully get it back later?
I'm not sure if that's the case, sir, but whether it's first and it comes back or it works out of credit of some sort, that's the legal discussion is, I'm not, I can't say how it's going to turn. It's a sequence of forms.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Is there another speaker? In that event, we will conclude citizens' comments on agenda items. One thing I did want to do when the firsties were speaking is my son and my daughter are here with me this evening. Elizabeth is my firstborn daughter, and James is my firstborn son. And they live here in the village, and their children went to the Garden City schools. And it's been a delight to have them, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone saw them here this evening. Good to see you. Good to see you. All right, I think that we are going to move on then to approval of the minutes. All right, I think I'm going to have to do this in four stages because at the special meeting on March 2nd, we had one person absent. So we, I'm going to ask you for a consent to give me a motion to approve these minutes up for March 2, 2021. First one, trustee Kali Foley. Second, John Delaney. All those in favor?
Aye. I'm going to abstain.
And Lewis, and that's it.
I'm abstaining, I wasn't at the meeting.
Say that again.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
Yes, the absent person. Thank you. That motion moved successfully. And now we'll move you on to March 9th, 2021, which is the budget meeting. And once again, I think we have, no, we have everyone present at that meeting, so may I have a motion to approve this, please?
Motion.
Trustee Macrinos and second trustee Foley, and all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Is Lewis the only trustee?
Yes, that ominous aye that made me hear a couple of speakers in the agency.
Yes, aye.
Okay. All right, the next, the third one is a, I want to approve the minutes to a water assessment review, and we did have one person absent at that. So may I have a motion to move that? Let's see, trustee Macrinos and second trustee Hire, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes.
Aye.
Seven, oh. And the last one is a March 11th, 2021. And we had one person absent from that. It was a regular board meeting, I think, and I'd like to have a motion to move it. Trustee Hire and a second trustee Macrinos, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then that motion is passed successfully. And so now, I would like to ask for a consent of the, for approval of the consent calendar.
Mayor, will that consent calendar then include the chamber permit requests?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion then?
Okay, trustee Hire and a second, please, trustee Foley, and all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. And so that brings us to, I believe, your.
Formal agenda.
The hearing date, budget.
Comments from citizens on any topic, am I right?
Mayor, I think we may have skipped inadvertently formal agenda, the setting of a date for a public hearing on the tenant's budget.
Yes, we did. All right, we are going to have, obviously, on April 5th, Monday evening, will be the new meeting, the organizational meeting, where contracts will be signed, and people will be assigned to roles, and a village newspapers will be selected. And so therefore, we want to set the date for that meeting. And so we have definitely decided on April 5th. And so I would like a motion to approve that. Can I have that from trustee Macrinos and from trustee Hire? And all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is passed unanimously. And then we did, did we completely? Yes, so we're going to move right to back to the citizens' comments on non-agenda items. So we will give time then for residents who have attended to speak on any subject that they like right now. If you have, may I have the first speaker? Is there a first speaker, ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, Dennis Stanley.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank the four trustees and you, Mr. Mayor, who are leading the board tonight. I did have the privilege of serving on the board with Bob Rollerbrook, you, Mrs. Mayor, and Brian Dorney, and Steve Macrinos and Mark Hire. I know all the hard work and dedication, the many long hours and long nights that go into being a trustee, and I want to wish us the very best in the future. And good luck to the new trustees who are coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker, please? Is there another speaker?
Yes, this is Steve Alardi.
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
I just like to mention, I attended the board meeting, the budget meetings through Zoom, and I was disappointed that there was no opportunity for comments from the public. In the past, when it was in person, most of the time, they did take questions from the audience. And I know you encourage participation from the residents, and to sit through the meetings, not to get an opportunity at the very end to make any comments was disappointing. And to sit through the meetings, not to get an opportunity at the very end to make any comments was disappointing. Thank you.
And?
Anybody else?
Steve.
Anybody else?
Oh.
Steve's.
Steve, do you have a question?
He already said his question, mayor.
Did you hear my comment on the budget meetings?
Yes.
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 Okay, that was my comment, that I was disappointed that there was no opportunity for public comment at the end.
Steve, that's the, that is the law. We cannot, in a work session, we do not accept comments from the public. You could comment on it this evening if you like.
And I believe that, Mayor, that the, that the, is it the April 5th meeting?
Yes.
It's the time when it's actually a public, Steve, it turns into the public hearing of the budget and that's when all comments are taken. But usually during, it's not usually, it's as major states, during a work session, there is no public comment taken.
I understood, but it years past when it was in-person, they did take comments from the audience at certain times. That's, that's my...
Outside of Steve Brack, I'm not so sure. I've just not experienced anything like that.
Okay, but I've been at the meetings, I've raised my hand and they've taken comments from the audience on various topics throughout the budget session when it was in-person. So, if I want on an April 5th, even though it's a done deal, pretty much, I mean, the comment portion of it, maybe I'll raise my issue then. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, it's Judy Courtney, 3 Tremont Street.
Go ahead.
And not to be a dead horse, but to support Steve, there have been budget meetings where we have made comments and it does seem to be inconsistent where some years there has been comments accepted and other years there haven't. I don't know why, quite frankly, but there very clearly have been years where we have been allowed to make comments during those budget sessions. So, going forward, as Steve said, I would agree with 100% that it's, you know, interesting to sit there, but it's frustrating to have feedback that cannot be allowed to give it. So, I would, I would ask that that be allowed in future meetings. I don't believe it's a law, I believe it's a decision.
Any further comments on this issue? Generally, in budget meetings, we do not have questions.
Can I ask a quick question? Colleen, I know you did a fair amount of time on the, on the, on the school board. When, when they also have budget meetings as we do in the work sessions, do you take public comments? I'm honestly curious. I don't remember in any of the years, I'm not here as long as everybody else, but I don't know.
This is Ryan. We do take comments during work, during budget sessions. We've done it for years. I'm not sure why we didn't do it, but there, my understanding is there will be two more hearings, won't there? Not just the April 5th. My understanding is the new board is going to review the budget in new hearings as well. So, there'll be opportunity for people to speak.
So, even in a work, sorry, my, my question was for Colleen, though. Does the school board do it a certain way or does it matter?
Yes, they, they do do it a little differently. The budget work sessions are the only time they take comments on, at a work session. They run work sessions throughout the year. So, usually there's one formal meeting a month and a work session when I'm served on the board. But during budget, comment times, as the parts of the budget are presented, they do allow public comment during that particular work session for that particular item.
So, whose decision is it to not allow comments? Or to allow?
That was what I was told. I'm trying to follow the rules. That at budget...
Margaret.
I said, that's what I was told. I try to follow the rules that generally in budget meetings, the residents may not ask questions. They are present at a budget meeting and they observe all the questions. If there are questions among the trustees and so forth, the residents usually do not make comments at budget meetings. Now then, you can say, well, they have done that. Well, they have, but you know, do we want to follow the rules or don't we? And that's something to discuss right then and there, it was bothering people.
That's not a mayor.
I mean, I, I think that if we, if people had spoken up about it, we would have, we would have thrown that set that idea around a little bit and we would have perhaps uncertain questions been willing to let residents ask. I didn't.
This is, this is Steve Alardi again and I am sorry to make another statement. But it was raised at the EPOA meeting with the trustees. We were told that there were no comments. And at the start of the previous budget meeting, the mayor made a statement at the beginning that there would be no comments. So, there was no opportunity at the meeting for the public to say, we would like to make a comment. And we did raise it at the EPOA level and we were told that it was not allowed.
Correct. Mr. Alardi, from a historical perspective, and mine goes back 20 years, during the time that I was a trustee, comments were in fact made at the election meeting.
Excuse me, but I haven't recognized you, all right? People speak one, one after the other. They don't speak to, they don't have conversations with one another at this time. So, Mr. Alardi, are you finished? Mrs. Courtney, are you finished? If so, then state your name and address and you can may speak.
Bruce Torino, 102 Knight Street in Garden City. My comment is that the protocol changes depending on who was conducting the meeting. When I was a trustee 20 years ago, yes, there was comment. There was not a response to the comment, but there was comment from those that were in attendance and it was encouraged. I do suggest that in the future, that residents who appear be allowed to encourage to voice what their concerns are. Thank you.
There's no reason why next year that can't be discussed. I don't think anybody is rigidly against it. I think we're trying to follow the rules and so that we can look into that again next year. Any further speakers? No, in that event, I think that we will, trustee Delaney, are you second guessing me?
I would go with we adjourn.
Okay, may we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Here we are.
John Delaney, and how about Mr. Dorney?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then so the meeting is ended. Thank you for all of your good words. Thank you.